So we will call the October seventeenth meeting of the Planning Commission to order. For tonight's agenda, we will touch base about the town plan and see how people are doing with their reviews and their potential suggested edits. And we will pick up on a conversation that started at our last meeting, which was providing support. It feels like we're playing, feels like we're playing mahjong, like that sound, that click the clap.
Before you sit, get to comfy, Chris, can you pull in another chair for Sarah?
Can somebody else do that for Chris?
Oh, thanks for your back. I already hear that. I know that feeling. Thank you for noticing that I counted wrong.
Sure.
Yes. I think so. We'll see.
Find out.
Um, okay. So back to the agenda, we will talk a little bit about the select board and some activities that the Planning Commission might want to do over the next couple of weeks to generate interest and engagement in from the community around the draft of the plan. Then we will discuss new business, which is the idea of applying for another, a new grant for what's called a bylaw modernization grant. And Linda will talk to us about that. Um, then we'll make a decision about whether or not we want to apply and the topic that we'll apply for. And then we'll hear some reports, wrap up and adjourn. So does anyone have any changes that there are needed for the agenda? Okay. Uh, next is public comment. Is anybody here from the public who would like to share a comment with the Planning Commission? And just so you guys on the Zoom know, we are alone here in the room. There aren't any members of the public here in the room. Okay. I guess it's an exciting agenda. Um, the next topic then is to approve the minutes of October third. Do I have a motion? Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of October third.
Wendy, thank you. And a second?
Second.
Chris, thank you. Any corrections or edits or discussion on the minutes?
Wait, Sarah, is Sarah talking to us? Oh, okay. I saw her hand go up.
Okay. All is in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye, you're opposed, or aye?
Aye, I am for, not opposed.
Yeah, yeah. Any abstentions?
Stand.
Eric? Eric's abstained. He was, we missed him at our last meeting. So the minutes of October third are approved. Okay. So now to talk about the town plan. Uh, at our last meeting, that was already after the select board presentation, or was it before? Okay, it was before. So maybe Linda, you could um, just give everybody an update about the select board meeting that you attended.
Yeah. Um, so Sarah and Sabina were there with me, which was great to have some PC representation and um, Catherine McManus was not at the meeting, so it was just Eric and Wayne and uh, I think the plan was well received and I asked for any feedback on how the Planning Commission could help support them with, you know, understanding the content and answering questions and addressing any concerns and there wasn't any specific feedback other than the perception that um, they wanted to have, they wish they had more time. Um, and so that was something that was unexpected for me to hear because I thought we had done a good job of engaging them before the plan actually got delivered. Um, and so I didn't get any specific requests. So I think our, our task here today is sort of strategize with what we might be able to offer them um, in the form of support and just communication around the town plan. And I'm sure all of you have probably heard that since that meeting, uh, Wayne has submitted his resignation. So that kind of changed the dynamical a little bit with the trajectory of the plan. Hopefully it won't upset anything, but you know, there are some unknowns as far as like what the makeup of the select board will be. Because I think Wayne's last day is the first meeting in November and he will not be on the board any longer at the hearing, which is the sixteenth of November.
But there might be a new appointee by then.
Yes.
Hopefully.
That's something we should factor into the conversation today as well. If there is, well, yeah, assuming that there is a new appointee, like what can we do and how can we uh, work with that person to make sure that, you know, they understand the process that we've gone through um, to develop the town plan and get them comfortable with the content.
But the schedule for approving it is outside of the town's control. Is that not true?
Yes. Well, there is a deadline that we have no control over whether or not we need that. I guess this in the select, under the select board's control.
But what would be the consequence of not meeting it?
Well, the consequences would be um, that we would not be able to make any amendments to our bylaws and zoning and that we potentially become ineligible for grant, state grant programs. There's not like a penalty per se.
But it's sort of a big deal.
I wouldn't recommend letting it expire. It also kind of then, you know, you lose some of the momentum and you lose the real like finish line mark that you are striving for. So I think if the plan were to expire, then we would kind of like, you know, then, then like the end zone keeps moving, it could keep moving um, to where you just, you don't have a finish line. That's hard to stop any longer.
A two-person select board could vote to approve the plan if an appointee is not, is not on board by the time the vote comes.
I believe so because it
It's a priority, right?
Yeah, so it'd have to be unanimous.
But they also can't even talk to each other outside of a public meeting.
But presumably they're aware of what's at stake.
They are, and they asked that question um, when, when we were transferring that thing to their ownership and I discouraged them from allowing the plan to expire.
I don't know if the rest of you got also the invitation to submit for that. I think it went out to every government commission in town. Do you know how many people have applied to be nominated for that post?
I don't. Um, I know that they're folks that I've noticed.
I, I heard uh, today from John, so far they've had three applicants.
They've had like
Three people stepped forward. I don't know in what capacity or what um, I don't know anything else. Just he said only three people have stepped forward.
About what?
Well, three is better than none. So
It's a thankless job.
And it's between now and town meeting?
Right.
Right. But it's likely that whoever gets, if they like it, will be reelected. So it's a good thing. If you want that job.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't invited. But
You can screw up. Nominate yourself. I'll nominate you.
Term expires.
Oh.
That's
I think it was till town, time, town meeting day to, because it's an appointed position. So it would have to be filled by an election at the next election that comes up.
Yes, that is my understanding as well.
Yep, same. That's my understanding also, that they'll
I just happened to notice today when I was looking at something else online that Wayne's term ends in twenty twenty-five. So I thought, oh, because I had heard what you guys just said. And then I'm like, well, I wonder which, but
That's actually a good question though, is whether or not they would have the option of having the appointee stay until the term is expired. Or have they already made a decision to have the position go to an election? I don't know.
According to the letter I got, they are seeking candidates to serve until the third permanent member is elected. Looking to town meeting day on Tuesday, March fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. I got that too.
Yeah.
I started, I got myself started to think, which is never, never
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I don't know who said they didn't get that email or they weren't invited, but I think it's obviously for anybody who has the email with them, it's really clear, like it's an open conversation. It's not top secret. So if you feel like you want to go for it, I encourage you to go for it.
I was kind of kidding.
Uh, Wendy, I was hoping you weren't kidding. It's you.
So it is a little precarious. And I think that when we think about the select board strategy, it'd be good to think about how to like minimize the risk and how to, how to reassure them that they have had enough time and that they have done their due diligence and that we, they understand exactly what's in there.
Are you thinking of some kind of summary that denotes the differences between existing and proposed?
Great idea.
Um, yeah, I haven't, I haven't really no, I haven't got yet that. So that's what we'll talk about next is what we want to do.
Welcome on board. By the way, here's the most important things we have on the Planning Commission for you.
So before we go to that, let's um, so the plan as it stands now, we, we approved it. We delivered it. Linda delivered it to the select board. They basically accepted it. That's all they did was like, okay, we got the ball, right? So they will go through their due diligence and they did also in that meeting warn their public hearing for November sixteenth. And um, so the draft that they received is the document that is like the subject of that warning. So that's our version three. Um, they will receive comments up to anytime between now and November sixteenth. So the public can look at the plan on the website and can submit comments to them. We can submit comments to them either individually or as a group, which we'll talk about also. And then at their hearing, they can listen to those comments and then ha- decide to have a discussion right then and there about all the comments they've received or a subsequent meeting or a subsequent discussion. David White will be there and I'm sure he, he will advise them. Hopefully, the comments that they receive are basically pretty innocuous and maybe aren't new and hopefully we've um, incorporated all the comments or most of the comments that we've heard. And if it's not to the degree that individuals feel like it should be, then we can explain to the select board why we did it a certain way. So one of my questions to David is what should the role of the Planning Commission be at that hearing? So do we sort of expound or illuminate? You know, if somebody says, why isn't it red? And we know why it isn't red or is it our place? Will there be time for us on the agenda to have some sort of response to the public comments? We don't know that yet. And then David will incorporate those comments and deliver version four. And they'll have a second public hearing. And the intention is that that's, that second, that fourth version from that point forward doesn't require any changes and it's good to go.
So the comments that are received after the first hearing, who is David the only filter for those? Or are we involved with that? Or is the select board involved? Or is it just David? Like who, who decides the merit or lack of merit of those?
The select board.
It's just the select board then?
So during this, this presentation, you mentioned about comments. Do we envision David doing all the response? David saying this is why it's red or do we envision that Planning Commission will say this is why the Planning Commission has agreed to it being read?
Um, I don't know what David's expectation is. So, and I don't know.
Well, it's less about his expectations, but us as a planning commission, do we want to be in the front or do we want to be behind David?
It's a good question.
I think it's our, it's our plan. And I think David, he's really articulate and he, and he knows how to frame responses. And I think he can have a, definitely have a supporting role. But I, 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 I think it should be us. And I say that, and I'm not the most articulate person in public meetings either.
Although technically he was hired by the select board. Doesn't he?
Yes.
At our recommendation.
I think there's, there's um, what happens at the hearing and what the responses are at the hearing might not be exactly the same as what the responses are. If you know what I'm saying, like because some, the select board might need time to think about it and we might want to take time to advise them based on what we've heard. So when I was saying, I don't know what David's expectation is, I was thinking more about like the logistics, like how much time they're going to give. Do they want to get into a debate right then and there? Do they want us to listen and then go back and have a meeting and prepare some sort of advisory? That's what I'm, I don't know exactly how the mechanics of it works. Um, but I agree with your um, sentiment that it's our plan and that we shouldn't just now, you know, have our hands tied behind our back and being like, oh no, they're changing it from red to blue, but we made it red on purpose and this is why. I just don't know the mechanics of how our input will be delivered.
It doesn't seem to me that the select board would have the history or expertise to make informed decisions about specific feedback to the town plan. I mean, we're the ones who've been in the, on the front lines of that process.
Mm-hmm.
I imagine we could offer to assist
Right.
as the filter for the feedback. And, because I can't imagine that, that they would want to. I certainly wouldn't want to.
Right.
If I were in their shoes to how to respond on the die, like in the moment.
Mm-hmm.
And so regardless of the dynamics in the room at the moment, I wonder if it makes sense to follow up on that. It sounds like you already opened the door in the delivery of saying, how can we help you?
Right.
And, and just re, reoffer.
Mm-hmm.
That that would be something if there, if it were appropriate for us to be able to support them in filtering through the comments after the meeting before the final changes are made.
Okay, so we have some constraints on that though, which is that after their, the hearing on the sixteenth, our next meeting is November twenty-first, which is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, which I was dreaming about canceling. Because I think that everyone here could really deserve a break and I think that that's a difficult week and a lot of people travel and a lot of people have visitors. So then we were also kind of the, if their second hearing were on December seventh, that's only like a couple of days after our first meeting. So our meeting on the fifth, but I, but Linda and I are skeptical that they'll actually be in a position to warn the second hearing on the seventh. It sort of depends on how many comments they receive. If their public hearing is like this and no one's there and, or a few people are there and expressing comments that they've already heard a hundred times, they might be more confident that the plan doesn't really need a lot of editing and review. And then they'll be like, okay, we can, this would be our recommendation is that then they go ahead and they warn for the next hearing on the seventh, then we wouldn't have a lot of work to do in the interim. Um, so that's one scenario. Or if it's more substantial, then the next time that they could warn it, I think was December twenty-first or December twenty-second, which is also like now you're right in the midst of the next group of holidays. Or their actual next meeting after that, I think is January fourth, which happens to be the date the plan expires, but also sort of in the midst of all of the holidays.
So there's also the option that they could hold a special meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Date to be determined.
And
But yeah, the holidays do kind of
Right.
Make it complicated.
So maybe the
Lead time, I'm sorry. What's the lead time for warning a special meeting?
Fifteen days.
Do, do they have to have a second hearing?
They do.
They do. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Fifteen days and the document has to be locked at that point in time. So any further edits have to be completed by then. So if they had a special meeting, it could potentially be the week of like the December fourteenth, which might be, might really actually talking it through seems like maybe the, the most realistic plan because at least it's not right in the midst of major holidays. And um, or in school vacations. But it would give them an additional week. So then if it were like the fifteenth or sixteenth, something like that, they would have to warn it by like the thirtieth or the first.
They have a meeting this Thursday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they can certainly be using that to put together. Obviously, we're not the biggest thing on their list right now, but that's an opportunity for them putting together questions and comments and things for us to act upon. But we could have it ready. So when we have a public meeting, that's already, we've already got some answers.
You mean comments from the select board themselves?
Yeah.
Okay, so that sort of is, is this
To smooth the process. So there's less of them having to go through that. They're on, let's, let's front load the work on it.
So that's sort of kind of tying into the select board outreach strategy, which so you're, Chris, you asked like, would there be some sort of a summary? So Linda and I kind of talked through a couple of different options. So, and they're, they're not either or. It could, we could do everything. So one idea was to offer to the, each select board member, since they can't meet together, that they could one-on-one sit down with Linda and me or Linda and Chris, you know, some combination of people to have a personalized like walkthrough, answer any questions. Here's what's in the document. Here's what's different. Here's what you really need to pay attention to, one-on-one. We could also um, schedule a special meeting or get on their agenda, which I think this Thursday is too, too soon. I don't know that we could be ready, but to get on their agenda and actually like really walk them through the plan and highlight what's different. But generally at their regular meetings, they would allocate maybe like twenty or thirty minutes or I would think, because they usually have a pretty full agenda. And I don't know if that seems like it would be enough time. Um, Linda has on here that we, we had talked previously about creating a summary document that would be good for the public. Also, we could use that for the select board also. Um, and then we were open to other kind of brainstorming ideas. So they haven't made any requests. I want to go and offer them like a menu of five ideas and five options and let them kind of choose what they want, but knowing that the timing is pretty tight.
Well, do they, do we know if they they must because their meetings, as you said, are full, they must hit the song with them and read it on on their own.
Yes. I went to the, I presented a preview of the town plan to the select board in September. And I told them to start with the public engagement report. Because that had all the comments from the forum. And um, and, and I, and I also told them to look at the word clouds and the surveys that were online. I was like, before you even look at the plan, because my message to them was, I think you'll find that public sentiment has changed from what you think it is. You know, you, select board, seem to think that people pretty much want the status quo. They just really aren't very focused on expenses. And that is not what the Planning Commission has heard. What the Planning Commission has heard is an appetite for change, uh, a willingness to make investment. Of course, nobody said how much anything is going to cost yet. So of course, it's easy to say, we want this and we want that. But overall, the, the demeanor is definitely different. And I called that out and I said, you need to go and look at that. And I also implored Wayne how to do that at the farmer's market on August thirty-first. So potentially they've at least looked at some of that. And then yes, they have the plan and they, just like us, in their own time, in between meetings, are able to, you know, read and do their homework and prepare questions. Um, we know Eric has a question, has some questions about why um, what are the benefits of expanding to a larger select board?
Case in point.
Right. So SJ and I are going to talk with him about that tomorrow. And that's what I said to S, or maybe I said it to Linda. I was like, I think this was maybe you had to explain it a couple of weeks ago, but now I don't, I think it's sort of self-explanatory. Because you can't not function if you're down a person or two. You know, like God
Well, especially when They can still function though.
Well, but especially when there's a deadline that's out of sight of the town's control.
Yes.
Has major implications.
Right. It's a, it's a vulnerability.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
As long as they're unanimous between the two of them, they can still do things, but as soon as they disagree.
Yeah.
Right, so their um, their agenda probably for this coming meeting is already published.
Yes, it's already said.
And is there anything on the town plan there? I don't think so.
Well, I would imagine I, I hesitate to say this because I don't want to create more work for us, but I would imagine if I were in their shoes, it would be helpful to have a summary of what the major differences are between the old plan and the new plan.
Mm-hmm.
It, it might just make it easier instead of having to read two hundred or three hundred pages twice.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it might be easier to say, okay, here's here are the major differences. Um, unless that could be captured in the summary document.
But also that in, that that would matter if we thought that they were very familiar with the current plan. Hmm.
Well, sure, we
So I don't know if the summary of the differences is really the most salient as opposed to just a summary of like the key points. The key, like the getting it done, the getting it done chapter, the future land use chapter, and then kind of like highlights in volume one. Um, I, it seems like they could focus a lot on volume one.
I think it's a reasonable expectation that a person could get in the volume one in a, you know.
In four weeks? Yeah, I think so.
Especially like you, you're, you focus in on those, those goals and strategy statements that are at the top of every chapter. Yeah.
Then you can digest it, you know, and they go along. But yeah, I mean.
So we could, we could um,
Hear them to say, okay, if you have nothing else, start with volume one and then we can build on that.
Right. So we could offer to present at their November ninth meeting. And we could also offer to have an actual detailed meeting, like three-hour meeting and bring in pizza and plow through the plan. Which is what Chuck had recommended that we do. Which could be on a Saturday morning or, you know, we could figure out when would be a good time to try to do it.
Can I offer?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and the suggestion on the, let's do a grant one-to-one. But I do, because I, I hear you, that that's a big assumption, that they're familiar with it and particularly at this time and with everything going on and whatever. Um, but I could imagine a summary, almost as you just spoke it, Susan, which is we heard like, it's more like an intro summary. Uh, this plan was developed based on this amount of public feedback. It's sort of like the contextual thing.
Yeah.
And so all the feedback. And the fact that we heard something really different, as you explained that, I think that's really compelling. And therefore what you will see is different in this one because the tenant has changed because of what we've heard. We are calling out the need for infrastructure investment. We're calling for the need for investment in housing. We are calling for particular changes and, and that's really in your front matter that you put it together anyway.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that would be compelling.
Mm-hmm.
As this, as
So what's the, what's the venue?
Yeah.
I guess. Do we just do that at one of their standard? I guess, do we just do that at one of their standard Thursday night meetings, do we invite host? Something different, something?
I wonder if it's the the part of the, there was an idea to do a, um. Uh, what did you, uh, hello? An article or an op-ed for the Gazette?
Mm-hmm.
It could be that.
Mm-hmm.
It's that call of like the summary and it's, because there is something about us vocalizing it, which is always important, but it's also really helpful to have it show up in multiple spaces. Because people will hit it at different times, and so I thought the Gazette was brilliant, the way you used it before. And then have that mirrored with additional outreach to the public, additional messaging directly to the. Select boards, so it's multiple hits, same message, the same message is, what's most important is, we heard you, there's a different tenor. These are the key things that we're aiming to achieve without necessarily all the strategies, because it's the why. People are more engaged in, in my opinion, and they understand the why as opposed to just the what.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be my my thought about what would be helpful as a summary.
Mm-hmm.
And then we build, we write the same thing, use it in multiple places.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a perfect idea, I question whether we want to do much more. Beyond reaching out to the select board at this point, but once they approve it, I think. Front porch forum, Gazette, everywhere, so it should be plastered, and then it's going to the vote, we want the pressure from the population on it. Whereas right now, we just want the select board to say, well, I see what what this is, we need to prove it.
It's not going to be, there's no vote.
Yeah.
But there will be opposition, and we'll start screaming at the select board if they don't, if they see something they don't like.
So that.
Wouldn't be the first time that has, that's happened.
I think I lost you too, Eric, because I I may maybe misunderstand the process, but I thought. That there are public hearings, and I was thinking that this would help people who, before they come to a public hearing, would have an understanding, and so that would be useful. And you're saying, are you saying before, not to do it before the public hearing, or?
I'm saying to reach out to the select board. As a separate group. When we present. This to them, whether it's formally or infomally, for this to be have. And then saturate the public, so that when the public hearings come up. We're getting, yes, we want this, yes, we want this, as opposed to the, how dare you say that you're going to do. Get your boogeyman.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Um.
But once, once we have the select board saying, yes, this is great, we want to move forward with it, then we need to get the population, our residents of Jericho who care about this stuff.
Right, so that, but I agree with you. It that, so communicating with the select board sooner. Is the most important thing then, because. If the hearing is on the sixteenth and there's any like public outreach, like come come to the hearing. If you want to do that about a week or more before. That is around their meeting before is, uh, so I missed up their meeting date wrong.
You know, the fifth.
Wrong, yeah, it's the second. Is the first Thursday.
Yeah.
So the.
Okay, that gives us a little more time.
First. Meeting in November, and then the sixteenth is their second meeting in November.
Yeah, okay, so.
And the sixteenth is the warned here.
That's the one here.
Right, is the hearing.
So you were saying the ninth before?
Yeah, that was wrong, unless that was a.
Well, it's nothing, but it's not in the.
Yeah, yeah. So I would think we would want to give the select board all the. Love and TLC and attention and walkthroughs that they need, either one-on-one or in a presentation format or in a roundtable or something. At at least before November ninth, so that then there was a full week to advertise it to the public. And we looked at the schedule for the Mountain Gazette. So. If we submit an article on the November ninth, it wouldn't get published until November sixteenth, and that seemed a little late.
Mm-hmm.
If we submit it on the twenty-sixth, then I think it would go out on the ninth.
Which is still after the next, after the next select board.
Right, so that seems like we should try to do the article on the twenty-sixth, and that's more of like public facing.
But we should also re- reinvigorate the front porch. Reach that we've done.
Yeah. So November second, we could ask to be on the select board agenda, but and that, you know, they might give us thirty minutes, is that adequate? Is that? I mean, I could still offer to do one-on-ones, but I, so I guess my question to the group is, do we want to also organize? An actual warned select board meeting? Could be all of us or just some of us, if it's more than, if it's four of us, it would be a warned PC meeting too, like a joint meeting. That would be. That would be the only item on the agenda, and it would be not rushed. It would be open to the public, but it would not really anticipate a lot of public engagement or public comment. It would primarily be to. Walk the select board through.
What if we sent them? A a letter that summarized. The new plan. With supporting. Background information and ask them. How they would like. We could ask them. Again, as you already have. If they would appreciate a joint meeting like that.
I didn't really ask them, Linda said, let us know. And I kind of think like we're in a better position to know what they need, I'm okay giving them choices. But I don't want to just blankly ask them.
Yeah, I I I think we should, I like the idea of giving them a men- a menu of options, and I like, I really like the idea of putting this. Uh, another meeting as an, as one of those options. I'm a little hesitant of of just giving them more stuff to read when, when, you know, I. I'd rather have engaged them in conversations where where. They could. Ask questions.
Right. And does the planning commission, do you guys think that that should be a planning commission meeting where at least four of us attend? Or are people comfortable if it's Linda and me and? One or two other people, and so then it wouldn't necessarily be a warned PC meeting.
Would we?
Be easier to schedule.
Select board meeting if it was.
Yes.
Select board of people there either way.
Yes.
They are saying they'll announce the uh new person by November third. So conceivably, by the week after, we would have a full select board to talk to. Which would be our next meeting.
So the week of. So that would be, if it's the third, that's the Friday before, so the week of November sixth. Is the week before their hearings, they would basically have like ten days.
So if we did it on the seventh with them, I'd have them to a meeting on the seventh to have that. That's a week before for them.
That's.
Week and a half.
That's a planning commission meeting night?
Yeah.
We could, November seventh?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
That's the first.
It is, yeah, I'm sorry, my calendar is off, it is, sorry, my.
I'm counting on it, I'm I'm counting on two Tuesdays without having a meeting.
Hope that you feel to be like every other week and customize it better than you.
You can't tell it first and third, right?
No. So guys, I'm just gonna chime in with an opinion really quick. Um. I was feeling before when announced he was stepping down. That one-on-one might be the best way to go through this, after seeing their reactions in. When it was presented to them. Last week. And, or was it, yeah, last week, two weeks ago, cannot even remember. Um. I feel like one-on-one would be better because. Their reactions to it, even though they said. Separately and together that they had all either read portions of it or thumbed through it or had certain things that they appreciated. I felt as though they were in very different places. And I also feel that. In walking them through it. It may be a lot more successful as an individual process, especially if there's a third person who comes in who. Has no familiarization with the document, because you don't know who that person is going to be. So my, my take is that a one-on-one or a two, two of us with one of them. Would be way more successful to actually get their questions answered and. Again, I think it would be even more successful if during that time we were writing down the questions that they had. And then relaying that as feedback or good solid questions to back to our group as a whole, back to the other. Select board members in some publicly. Shared format. So that's my take on it, just because I think they're in very different places and I. I did get the feeling that they were totally overwhelmed during that handoff. And that was a little bit scary for me.
Mm-hmm.
So so my confidence that they will have time to read and digest the document before a public meeting of any tough, any type is. Maybe not that strong.
Hmm.
Big advantage of Sarah's ideas is not an official meeting for either group, if you do it that way.
And then we can schedule it when it's like the most convenient for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we're sure that it gets done and we're sure that that they understand. What's in the document and it can be at their speed, because I think the the formerly three now, two of them move at different speeds.
Mm-hmm.
But I feel like we should leave ourselves the option of having a joint meeting. You know, before the hearing, if if the one-on-one meetings. Leave us feeling like. There should be a next. An additional step.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and tonight I think we should plan for it and talk about it. Um, as if we were doing the joint meeting, because they may, for whatever reason, say that what I just described is not okay for them.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and I think, Chris, if I remember right, the last time we talked about it, you. I thought were thinking that it would be more, that it would be important for them. To be asking their questions and walking through the plan in a warned public meeting. Not necessarily like one-on-one. Do you? I just want to give you the opportunity to refute that.
I I I don't.
Are you okay with it?
I'm I'm fine with the one-on-one, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, with that, especially if it makes it easier for people.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So Linda, do you think, like, at the hearing on the sixteenth, what I am at, recall is that. David or you would give like an overview of the plan, kind of like we did in our public hearing? We gave an overview of the plan and then we opened it up for comments. Wouldn't we do the same thing, someone would do that at the select board meeting on the sixteenth?
That is what I'm expecting, but I need to schedule a meeting with David to discuss the details of that.
Okay. If, let's say that's correct, would you think we would also then want, need to be on their agenda on? November? Ninth, I guess, when the new person is there to. Do that in like a kind of less cranked up. Setting?
If there ever.
Not necessary.
Sixteenth would be the next meeting we have.
I wouldn't want them to be. At the place where they were when they received the plan. At the hearing, like, I would like there to be something that happens, engagement-wise with them in between. When the plan was delivered to them. And the hearing, what that thing is.
Mm-hmm.
Think, you know, it's what we're discussing today, I don't know that it needs to be. Us at their meeting necessarily, but it needs to be something.
Mm-hmm. But you don't think it has to be being at their, that meeting?
I know.
Yeah, okay, because that would be great. Because otherwise, I feel like we're just saying the same thing over and over again.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Okay, so I, it kind of seems like we'll offer them one-on-one. And or. A, almost like a retreat. Maybe position it like that. Can be warned, but doesn't have to be on your regular agenda time and. And then we'll figure out who from us. Can do it based on their schedule. And not really go for one of their meeting agenda items, seems like that's going to be the least productive, because that's sort of just a dog and pony. We don't really need to do a dog and pony, it's not going to help them.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that. They might appreciate having it outside of their normal time, because because, as you said, they have a pretty packed agenda.
Right.
It just. Removes that from the.
Right. Okay. Um. Okay, so we actually kind of skipped a little bit of the first bullet under here, which is that, um. We, Linda and I, just wanted to give planning commission members the opportunity, if you've been going through the plan yourselves. And finding additional edits that you would like to suggest to David or to Linda. If, are any of those significant enough that you'd like to discuss it with the group? If they're all basically phrasing and. Organization and streamlining, I don't think we need to discuss it i- in the meeting. But have you encountered anything that you think warrants discussion here? That was really the purpose of this time.
I have. I think that the discussion that the select board had at their last meeting about the state of the town garage. Um, it's pretty dire. And I believe they're gonna put, if they haven't already, Sabina, maybe, you know, put the document detailing. The, um. What was the, what was the presentation called, Sabina?
Um, it. You mean, who was the presenter or?
No, like, what did he call it? It wasn't like a prospectus, it was like a. Status report. Here's what, here's what you own and here's how bad it is.
Right.
I don't remember what it was called. Yeah, assessment, thank you. So the assessment was dire and it was very clear that that's something that needs to be addressed. In the near term, and that should go as an action item on our first year action item list. In the town plan. So that is what I propose, that is the change that I propose.
Where does it fit, Sarah, just in terms of our scheme? Because it, I'm not, I'm not disputing that it's important, it's just more conceptual.
So who's, who else has read it that was not at the meeting or didn't watch the meeting?
I read the report.
Okay, Sabina can fill in, so this is what I heard at the meeting, for anybody who hasn't had time to read it or hasn't seen it or didn't hear about it. So the consultant went in, he assessed the garage, he came up with multiple reasons why it's not a safe working space for the people who work there. Um, multiple reasons why there's an older building and a newer, newer, what, nineteen seventy-three or something building, and they're basically holding each other up. And you cannot alter the existing building to make it safe for the employees. Um, and and some of the things are, there's only a portable eyewash station, so if one person needs an eyewash. After that, there's nowhere for anyone to wash their their eyes out if there's an accident. Um. There is a small toilet in a closet, but most of the employees can't close the door based on their size when they're in that space to use it. Um, there's no office, no heated space. The trucks that we're ordering are actually two feet shorter than the regulation or the, not regulation, but the standard bed trucks. That are manufactured, so we have to order specially manufactured trucks that fit inside the garage and be able to close the door. Um, they don't have the correct exhaust mechanism to have a truck idling inside while it's being repaired without hurting the air quality. And they don't have the correct um carbon monoxide and smoke detectors in the building to. Show when air quality is unsafe. Um, and there was lots of, no potable water at all.
Water.
No potable water.
Yeah.
It was pretty, it was pretty unreal, and I felt very much like if Osha or someone else found out. It would get shut down and we have to outsource to Essex and Underhill and everywhere else just to get our roads plowed. So that is a multi-year process to get that up and going, so the action item would be to. Go through and take the next steps. Basically, make it a project to take the next steps, outline there and see where it takes us, which may or may not lead to. A bond and the construction of a new facility, et cetera, et cetera, and and obviously.
I know what you're asking. So would it be effective community because of infrastructure, or would it be effective community because of government?
Why vary it, frankly, in the town plan, like, is the town plan the right mechanism, like, if this is dire and it needs to happen? Is it?
But the town plan, the town plan takes effect in January, January fifth. Is when everyone starts looking.
I think it is, because I was listening to, I read the report and my first, my first reaction was, there goes our wastewater. So it's, the estimate was four million dollars. So it actually does, I think, does fit in the town plan because it's huge. And it is going to be something that, you know, is going to have to be weighed as a priority, so.
I think I'm still struggling and I apologize, it's it's my understanding of what are the different vehicles that are available to the town in decision-making, and so I was just. You know, if this is something that. Sounds like a disaster. Not even waiting to happen, but a disaster already, right? Is it something that that needs to be in the town plan in order to get that action, or is there a different mechanism such like? The cattle budget or some other mechanism that? the capital budget or some other mechanism that the town can just move on it so that if we get hampered in the town plan for whatever reason, it doesn't get lost. So so it's not about whether or not the town plan is
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think what is the right.
I don't think it's going to get lost if it is or isn't in the town plan, but I think it should be in the town plan because it's part of, you know, there's a whole chapter on like public facility, what all the all the facilities are and the assets and.
I kind of I kind of disagree with that. I think this is a if it's addressed in the town plan at all, which it can be. It shouldn't be around the general maintenance of the town's infrastructure and facilities as a priority for the town to signal out, single out this as the only thing ignores all the other things in town that we need to have repaired.
Talk about the schools.
The schools. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of other things that we have that are infrastructure that need to be fixed. This is a capital budget budget kind of item. It should have been on the select boards rise and years ago.
It should have been in the town plan when it was updated.
It doesn't say that necessarily.
But it should have been in the town plan in twenty sixteen.
Functioning infrastructure. Town plan should say we maintain the town's buildings. Signaling out one and not any others is detrimental to the message. The message, the message is you've got an investment, you made it, maintain it. And I I disagree.
I think this building is beyond maintainable at this point was the message I heard. We are past the phase of maintenance. We are in the replacement phase.
I completely concur with you.
Is that it? It just needs to be stated that we take care of what we own. As a general statement and not call out one thing over another because it's really not about the garage in terms of the plan.
Correct.
I think it's also a strategic decision and if it's not a a a decision about where does it live and what's the right like I'm asking the strategic question about the lever. If you want to get to attention both for this and not and hold true to what we've said are priorities in the town plan. I don't disagree with it. I just it it's really I'm asking in a questioning place of not knowing because I don't still understand how decisions get made fully about how money gets spent. Right? And so.
I think the I think the problem that we're working toward addressing is that decisions get made without enough reference to the town plan and without a comprehensive capital program.
Yes.
And so the town plan is setting the foundation for that and saying we have to take care of infrastructure that we have. We have to build new infrastructure that we need. And we know in year one through three, these are the these are the projects that are that are either already in scoping like the wastewater study. Now we have this town garage situation which has thank you to Aaron who told us it was called the feasibility study. A highway maintenance facility feasibility study. We have this study in our hand that has um that has that is the clay is molded. So if we didn't have that study, we would we would have a generic like we should be looking at all the buildings and making sure, but we know that there's interest in the library becoming ADA compliant. Now we know that there's a dire need to replace this maintenance facility. And I would argue that it should be in the town plan because so much of the town plan is about infrastructure and roads and sidewalks. And these are the people that build the stuff and make the stuff. So to not put it in there is sort of like, you know, not having garlic and onions when you're trying to make a stew like it's it's essential.
But I I don't. I guess I we're not, we don't, the town plan doesn't list specific projects like that. It's a broader encompassing vehicle. And so I think it's a little bit odd to have one specific project regardless of its importance called out on the like one year to do goals. When nothing else like that exists i- in the we reference the need for infrastructure and wastewater, but we don't say you must build it at Brown River Middle School to service Riverside. We say we need it.
Right, but we we said we needed to complete the.
We perhaps look at a compromise.
Hmm.
Because I I understand and I agree with the urgency to get it done. Something that says the town needs to invest in appropriate infrastructure. Which we already agree is wastewater treatment plant and a few other things. And maintain existing infrastructure such as the town garage, which is in a state of current dis- disrepair. So we are saying this is a such as meaning there are others like it. But we're not saying it's only the town garage. We're saying we have to maintain what we have.
Okay.
That does that feel better?
Let's say the town decides to spend four million dollars on a new town garage.
Okay, great.
Are we just going to sleep at night saying like, we're going to put it right next to the existing town garage? Or does the planning commission look at that and go? Maybe there's something bigger and better about this location right next to Mobs. And then there's the commercial district and then there's a gravel pit like and people want a recreation center. Maybe the town garage could share a site with a recreation center. I think it would be sort of a mistake to just assume that you the garage needs to be replaced. And if it's to the tune of four million dollars, to me, that is a planner and planning opportunity. Like, it's terrible. I I said this in email to John Abbott, like never waste a good crisis. It's terrible. So could we do something better? So that's what's.
You're talking about a feasibility study for where the new town garage should be.
Yep.
That I could think would make total sense to go in a year one plan. Because that's a conceptual planning level.
Right. And I think, of course, it's harder to think that way. And so chances are it'll just get built right next to where it is. But I was like, it was actually my husband who asked the question. He was like, how much is that land next to Mobs worth? Like, that might be.
The old town dump.
It is, but there's a lot of money available for, you know, cleaning up brown field that has a solar field like like we need to do the the economics like and figure out, is it really the best?
Yep.
Decision to put it there.
So you're suggesting that we take a we take advantage of a crisis crisis and say, let's evaluate within the first year where the new town where the town garage should be and take steps to like replace, repair.
Wouldn't you kind of want it right on Route fifteen? Because that's plowed in the winter by the yeah, plowed in the winter by the state?
Well, it depends. If you live on Brown Straits Road, you might want it there instead because it's going to get to your house first.
I mean, but all the people who work there would be able to get there and get the trucks out like it just, I don't know. So.
We're off track.
Another place for the for the employees to work in in term like that.
I think they, yeah, they they are figuring out something in the in the short term.
The um consultant Matt was that having a new a new facility regardless of where it ends up being is going to help us retain employee.
Oh, yeah.
Because we're just like hemorrhaging highway workers. What do you want us to come here? Because and one thing that Sarah didn't mention was that OPS, nobody knows where the septic goes. Like, it's like, nobody knows.
It's just not.
Embarrassing.
That's it. It is embarrassing.
The consultant said, I would not let my children work in this facility. That's what he said.
Right.
I would let my daughter work for you. I wouldn't let my son work for you. Nobody in my family should work for you. He said, this is the worst, Sarah. Did he not say this is the worst example he's seen?
No, she's still there.
She is. Anyway.
Anyway, okay, so.
Still here. Couldn't push the button fast enough. Still here. Yes, he said it's the worst he's ever seen. He had a hard time delivering it with a square face with a straight face. He was embarrassed for us.
It's sad, but are we?
So what if we look for tech, a a place in the text where we're already talking about infrastructure and already talking about taking care of things to do what you suggested, such as the town highway facility, which needs to be replaced? And we should consider the best location and the best facility. And is there a way to combine it with something else that the town needs? Because that would maybe access more funding for it, you know?
As you said earlier, tie it up with a recreation facility.
Or a park and ride or, you know, yeah, any number of things. Exactly. So if we subject it like that and then include it in the list, because I think it is bigger than just any other project.
As long as you don't use that town owned property at the corner of Packard and Route fifteen.
Yeah.
And and does it and while we're talking about capital improvement plans? Um. Is there a place for that in the in the economy chapter? Or is that also not really our?
The capital improvement plan?
Like that we say that we should have one.
Oh, we do say we we've been there.
Yeah.
It's in volume one and it's in the action list.
Yeah, I think it's an effective governance.
Yeah, it's in there for sure.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
That would be a good way to put it. We are still calling it out, but we're not placing it as something unique. It's it's endemic of or emblematic of what the town is not doing right to take care of.
Yeah, it's a really good example, right, of why? I mean, we should have been accruing money for ten years to replace the thing.
Yes.
And at some point, I would like us all to also to say, is there any other lever that's available to us to support the kind of action that's needed? Like as you know, that's separate from the town plan. Is there a way that we can be useful? Because it does sound like it's.
Definitely the cap- the capital improvement could be could be ARPA. Um, I think they're probably losing sleep over it.
Hmm.
Was so I think whether it's in the town plan or not, I think about the town plan a lot, though, in terms of like we're not always going to be here. We're not always going to be here, right? You need the institutional.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Documents so that the next person goes, oh, this is something we need to pay attention to.
One hundred percent. I was offering it as a yes and. Yes, let's do this. And if there's anything else that we can also do, then it sounds it sounds catastrophic.
Yeah, it does sound catastrophic. Okay, so Sarah was mentioning something she thought that should be changed. Sounds like it came up, Linda.
Before we move on from that, I would like a volunteer to identify the location and tell me where it is within the document where they want to add this. Provide the text and the location.
The text. So we need text and we also need the action item.
Yes.
Text. Do you want to do that, Eric?
He's even writing.
Sure.
He's writing, aren't we?
He is.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. Okay, did anybody else come up with anything in the meantime that they feel is missing or needs to be changed? That warrants discussion here?
Just a quick question about PUDs. And I saw in one spot, I think it's in the um, I think it's in the natural resources section, but it could be in the land use. It talks about, you know, encouraging PUDs and I I don't think we should take that out, but I'm wondering if knowing what we know now that PUDs maybe aren't the end all be all that we expand that to say like or and or other, you know, um, tools which, you know, would help us achieve our goals, you know, just so it doesn't end at PUDs so that we can then have the wiggle room to say, oh, but in this case, this would be better.
Hmm.
Because now we are smarter and we know more and we know that the PUD isn't the best fit for this. So just to I'll find that section and run and but I just.
It's in a couple of places. So you might want to do like a find and um, I'm okay with that. Is everybody okay with that?
Is it PUD?
Hmm.
Or is it?
PUD is mentioned specifically because that's what we've always used as a tool to kind of help with open space and stuff like that.
Thank you.
But I think more, there's more information now and more current like from um CCRCP.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Which gives us an additional set of tools.
Hmm. I think if you say the the like the what we're trying to achieve and not necessarily the particular method.
Right, no, I want to be open.
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense because we'll learn more over time.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have any more pub- any public here? Is SJ?
No, SJ and Sarah are out there. Yes.
Is it appropriate to give them a question?
Um, sure, but so just let's go run through planning commission first. Did anybody else? So that was Sabina's comment. So you'll find those locations. Is everybody comfortable with that? Just of an edit, okay? Anybody else have anything?
Did we want to do anything further in the town plan to talk about um various uh owners' covenants?
We do. We do.
And there we added it. It's an it's an action item.
We added it in volume three. Yeah, a version three.
Okay.
Volume three. Oh, my God. Lord, help me.
Please don't.
I know. Good, good, good catch, though, because we we did talk about it and we never really went back and said, okay, now it's in there.
Okay.
I saw it there.
Yeah, yeah, I saw it there too. It is there. Anything else? Okay, good idea. Wendy, SJ. Did you have anything? Um, I assume that you're going through it and you're you and or your committee are delivering suggested edits to Linda using the spreadsheet, the matrix per their request. So you don't have to repeat what you're already doing unless you feel like there's anything you'd like to us to weigh in on or give you guidance on or run by us or anything like that.
No, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, but no, I think I'll be delivering feedback to Linda. And if there's anything um if there's anything larger, um, then I think I'll come, I'll come to you guys and try to coordinate. Um, maybe understand first if the try to reconcile um and then come to you to kind of coordinate how to communicate um with the select board. But no, at this time, I don't have anything, anything big to bring to the group, but I really do appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. All right. So are we now can we move on? So we talked about town plan feedback. We talked about the select board outreach. So we're going to offer them a one on one. And we're all going to also offer them some sort of a like special meeting and kind of leave it in their court if they want to do that. What they want to do. Then um would we anticipating some public outreach and we talked about the benefit of a summary document tonight in terms of the select board, but I think this topic was really in in thinking about the public. If um anybody would like to volunteer to create a summary document that could be posted on the website as like a intro to the plan. Which could really just lift right from the plan itself. It could be just kind of cut and paste from the goals and priorities chapter or the intro chapter, some little combination of that. Maybe a little bit about what we talked about tonight, some of the public engagement as the as the context. And it seems like that should be completed by November ninth, which would mean we would review it in our meeting on November seventh. So that's one, two, three weeks. And it probably would be three quarters of a page long.
I think I'd rather write ten pages than three quarters of a page.
Me too. I was wondering, I think Sarah and Chris have been the most
Yeah.
enthusiastic about the use of a of a summary and then Heidi had some good guidance. So I was wondering about some some of those three to draft it.
I would be happy to help.
Yeah, okay.
So if we wanted to look at it on the seventh, it's a root. How's before that? How much before that does it actually need to be done?
I mean, Linda usually.
Like in the day count to get.
Yeah, the packet goes out on the third.
Probably the Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to do it.
Friday before, so she would post it to our shared drive. So people would have a chance to read it over the weekend before the meeting. So you're right. So it's more like two and a half weeks.
Okay. Yeah, I I'm I'm happy to. And then Chris, maybe you and I can talk about it in the drive home about how we want to approach. And like getting something.
And I will just put a plot. I know Sarah didn't volunteer, but I'll put a plug in for her because she's quite a pithy writer. I think her front porch forum posts are very accessible and friendly. And so she has a good knack of a tone. So you might try to part, try to lure her in. Try to part, try to lure her in.
Okay, Sarah, be warned.
Well, we can't hear you, so we're assuming.
Yeah, exactly, and that's what I was gonna say, you you can call me, but you don't know what you might get the next week. We still have another week of. Ball sports and then basketball season starts and a bunch of other stuff and indoor soccer, so.
Probably just do it. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm thinking that if if maybe. I'm really good at at starting things, I'm a good starter.
Yeah, perfect.
Right, so like if I could start something that even is just like, here's the outline of the key points and then pass it over.
Okay, now if you add it all in.
And I like to edit. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I I like that idea. We can pass it around and I think we can come up with something good.
Okay. Do we think we should submit another article to the Mountain Gazette? Cause we just did one. And this was, the idea was just to generate a little bit of exposure that the hearing is coming up. That the draft has been completed for people who still look at the newspaper.
I'm I'm all for multi use of the summary. Right, so if we have this summary.
Timing doesn't work. The art, the article has to be submitted by October twenty sixth.
Unless you get it done early.
Yeah.
It's basically by eleven thirty.
Yeah.
Well, let's just see.
Okay, give it a try. And actually, if you have something rough, then I could probably take it, turn it into an article.
I'm literally gonna take an hour and make an outline by cutting and pasting.
Yeah.
It's gonna be bogus. It's gonna be terrible.
No, that's okay.
All right, and I'm not saying it's gonna be.
That I could work.
So that, you know, I'm just, that way they'll actually get it done, right?
All right, so I'll I'll do the article and I'll use whatever you.
You said the twenty third?
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth.
Right.
Okay, that's gonna be challenging for some away this weekend, but I'm gonna do my best.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on the town plan?
I did have one comment that came to the Affordable Housing Committee last week. It was more of a notation that in the responsible party. It appears to be incredibly heavy on Planning Commission being responsible party.
I agree.
And.
But you weren't here, were you here for the ball conversation?
Yeah, Eric was here, I think.
No, or or maybe you were away. Did you miss a meeting?
This was on the tenth of. Yeah, the tenth was one of those last, so at the Affordable Housing Committee, it was just last Tuesday.
No, I mean, at our last meeting with the whole ball analogy. Were you here for that?
Yeah, 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 we've we've got the, we pass the ball to people, we're managing the ball. But the impression that came across from one of the other members on the Housing Committee was. Can the Planning Commission do all of this and shouldn't some of this be shoved over to? The elected authorities of the town on the Select Board?
I think it's our chance to lead by example. I think we can do it.
I agree. I think that Planning Commission, this is our function. However, I'm just raising this as something that came up in another meeting and. We might wanna talk about how we're going to address that in public as well. Why Planning Commission? Why not somebody else other than us saying, cause it's our job?
Yep.
And I think part of the answer is we have the thirty five thousand foot view of what's going on.
And I think it's really important, the ball analogy is really important to bear in mind. It doesn't mean we're doing the brunt of the work.
Yeah.
It means we're making sure that the work happens.
Yeah, like the coach, yeah.
Did we change the column header? Does it say, I I don't recall.
I remember us talking about that.
Rather than just responsible party, did it, did we change?
Just lead.
Lead.
Yeah.
Initiator.
But but either way, it does, it's a lot of Planning Commission is leading through all of this.
I'm sort of relieved, because I thought what you were gonna say is that they were saying like, oh, Planning Commission wants to run the whole town. Like it was almost like a power grab or something like that, but. It's a good point, like in some ways, like.
I could see that.
Does it reflect, does it reflect a bias in a way that? Like we didn't have the town garage on our radar. So there's probably things that we're kind of missing because we're looking at, we've been looking at things a lot through our work. So I think that's a good thing to ask ourselves and also I think it means that we need to. Get each project to the next point so that it can be handed off to the next person. Cause we can't keep all those.
No.
Can't have everything.
We don't have the resources.
Right.
Look, but the town doesn't have the resources.
Right.
And we know this.
Right.
From history, and so this is our chance to say, okay, we understand that's the current situation and in light of that. We will take the lead and make sure these things get started.
But so our our lead on that needs to be a sense of urgency and figuring out what the next step is. Defining the next step and figuring out how that's gonna get done and advocating either for them to hire somebody or. Some job or some other committee or whatever, yeah.
We've spent.
Like, we really don't want stuff on our list, all that stuff on our list, the whole year.
Enough time being. I can just speak for myself, being frustrated at how. Hard it is to get things done. This is our chance to say, okay, we're gonna. Put our money where our mouth is and we're gonna say, okay, we will take the lead and we're gonna make sure something happens.
So we'll find out, we'll find a person who can do the waste work even assessment plan or. Not feasible at the time or.
Totally the right person so much that they.
That they will do it.
They'll do it.
Or the bike path, we will actually. Put that in front of you. They'll make it our job.
Okay.
We will be somebody's royal panier.
I'm assuming that's gonna be a big part of the discussion with the Select Board, so that's a good thing to be, that we'll be mindful of is is have we. Overextended ourselves, is there really not a better definition, maybe the maybe the the task. If it were better defined, could be handed off to somebody else or and making. So I I think that's a good point. So we'll just think about it as we go through. I don't know if it'll generate any changes at the moment, but. Okay, anything else on the town plan? All right. Um, next is the grant.
All right, let's just share the. So I did put. The grant eligibility, what's it called? Bylaw modernization grant program description and guide in the Google shared drive today. I don't know if any of you had a chance to look at it. Drop the ball last week. Um, so I wanna just kinda give some background information to.
Could you, could you shrink the other piece? We'll see more of it, please.
Yes, and also, so Sarah and S J. Well, I guess I don't have to do, okay, nevermind, we, I can see them. So yeah, just just raise your hand if you have something to say or shout out, because we're having some trouble with the Zoom view. All right, that worked for everyone in terms of the font size.
Um, so background information on the grants. A relatively new grant program and it is from the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, and you can apply for municipalities can apply for up to twenty five thousand dollars and it has to be used for land use development. And by and zoning by law updates in support of pedestrian oriented development pattern. That increase housing choice, affordability and opportunity in areas planned in accordance with Vermont Smart growth policy.
Why are you laughing? Cause it's a mouthful?
It is a mouthful.
There are so many ways that you could, I love that you highlighted it, thank you, because there are so many different places where you could choose to. Decide that, oh, this applies to me or it doesn't apply to me. So thank you, sorry.
It's okay.
It it was like, they didn't wanna just say what it is.
Yeah.
So they, there's a whole lot of.
Yep.
And this is my condensed version. Very much, so.
Obstification.
Yeah, I really appreciate what you did there.
So this is condensed from what the actual eligibility paragraph says. So the gist of it, you know, is essentially more or less like village oriented, uh, village scale. They're always looking to focus their investments in designated village centers and the other areas that are designated by the state. So that's really what this money is targeted towards. So the town would be expected to contribute a minimum of ten percent match. But the match is forgiven if the bylaws that are generated with this grant are adopted by December thirty first of twenty twenty five.
That's fine.
So there is potential if we were to get this grant or we were to do the work to, you know, do a bylaw update. And actually adopt it, that there would be no cash out of pocket on the town's behalf. So that's sort of background information. Any questions or thoughts on that? Does it seem pretty clear? Pretty clear, okay. So I went through the draft of the town plan and was like, okay, well, what do we already have in the queue or have in our priorities here? That kind of aligned with the eligibility criteria. Um, one thing which we've already been talking about was the update to the character based zoning in Riverside, um, so there's potential for.
Aren't we already under contract with David for that?
We are, however, we could get grant funding to put towards that work.
Pay pay him with the grant instead of wherever it's coming from now.
You could apply if the two things are already in process. Question mark. You can.
Well, so we haven't technically started working on those. Updates yet.
I'd hate to wait on them in anticipation of this as opposed to getting it done.
Right.
Notifications is pretty soon now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the grant period starts January first of twenty twenty four, so it's not far.
We wouldn't have to wait.
Good, because that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that's been in our queue for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then I thought in companionship with that, another another eligible item that's sort of in our queue is. Working on a neighborhood development area designation in either Riverside and or other village centers. And so what that is, it's like an enhancement of the village center designation. Um, and it could, it's could encompass an area that has a broader geographic reach. Uh, beyond the designated village centers, because those areas, the designated village centers eligibility is. Uh, based on like historic reservation and they're generally pretty tight boundary areas and other villages have grown, have a lot of. Compact development that falls outside of that historic pattern. Um, so we could potentially apply for, um, prepare an application to apply for a neighborhood development area designation. And then the other thing I thought of, uh, would need to consider zoning updates for Jericho Corners or Jericho Center. So it could be, um, developing some sort of. Uh, similar character based zoning to those villages. Or doing some more like. Increasing density or housing forward amendments. I haven't quite fleshed all that out in my head yet, but that would be part of the conversation. Today here and going forward, if we decide we wanna do that for a good grant.
Can I get three of them?
So and the application is for ace, like one of these specific projects.
Well, I think we could talk about combining some of them. I think in my mind, the most logical combination would be. Doing the update of the character based zone in Riverside and simultaneously auditing the zoning at the same time. To see if it, how it how it compares to what's required for the neighborhood development area designation. That to me is like the most logical pairing. I think doing all three at once, there. I don't know exactly how much it would cost, but my suspicion is doing all of them all at once is going to cost more money and take more time.
Well, the character based zoning is probably gonna cost more than that grant. I don't know what is.
I don't think it's.
Do we have an estimate from him on it?
Well, we must.
We do.
I thought he was under contract.
It's in the contract. I don't have the number in my head.
Yeah.
Do we know?
The number I have in my head, which is extremely unreliable, because that my head is very unreliable, is fifteen thousand dollars. But I've.
Do we know what we paid for it the first time around?
We applied for this grant before we got declined.
No, no, do we know we paid for the character based zoning that we have?
Oh, my god.
You really wanna know?
Yeah, no, I have no idea. But I think.
Yeah.
David thinks that the changes are are. You know, not like a wholesale.
We don't need all the graphics this time around, all the images of street sides.
So can I try that? So so somehow we've already decided that there's money to pay him to do the update of the character based zoning in Riverside. That's already committed, so it sounds like. Right, so why? Pitch that and not pitch the neighborhood development area, which we don't yet have money for.
I think the why is to, like Eric said, use grant money instead of town general funds to support. The character based zone update.
But do we already have approval for town funds?
Yes.
We need a garage.
So wouldn't it be better to, to your point, wouldn't it be better to apply that? Keep it where it's already applied for and use the free money for something else. Instead of spending twenty five, we can spend fifty. It only costs us twenty five. Half off.
Or you could look at it as the money that we were going to pay David out of the general fund and the budget for the character based zoning could be freed up for use.
For something else.
Yeah, yeah. Good thing about, I, yeah, I see what you're saying about the character about like, well, why not get more money? But the application is due on November first. You have to have a really like clearly defined project. I think we have like a decent chance of being able to actually put forward an application on that, whereas the uh, the neighborhood development is. Would be kind of starting from scratch. We don't really have our arms around it. It's like a shovel ready.
Yeah, do we, um, one other strategy question, you said we've applied before and didn't get it? Do you know that was? And is this a different, sufficiently different opportunity?
Well, I think, are you referring to the sec- the supplementary grant for the town plan update? No, you're talking about some.
Yeah, it was like two years ago, I thought, with Catherine Sonic. Do you remember that? We applied for. Oh, yeah, you would remember, like something related to. The zoning for housing and I think we wound up doing it on our own.
Thank you, right.
I know that that program, since this is new, I suspect I might have applied in the first year it was available and there was high demand. Which I don't know if that's still the case, but it's completely there's in now, so I don't, I don't know, but it's independent.
Yeah, I also think, yeah, we can make a pretty compelling argument. And also, um, Sabina and I met yesterday with the people who are trying to do this project in. In Riverside with Greg Tatro called Wisdom House.
Yeah, yeah.
That we've all heard about before and they seem like they've made a lot of progress. They formed an entity. They have some designs, they have better idea of the changes in the zoning that are needed to support. A little bit of what they wanna do, they wanna start figuring out how to access funding, so I think we could even. Talk about that project that we have a public private partnership waiting in the wings. We just need. And we need the zoning to enable or to catalyze it.
Is there any public outreach as a part? Is is public, is public outreach a part of the? Updating process?
Yes, and I think it doesn't even say any application.
Cause they, I I did read, I did have a chance to skim the application and they were talking about how there's available funding for things like. Getting, um, providing childcare support for for folks who are typically don't come to public participation.
So the valid, the eligible activities. Are underwrite expenses for public meetings and hearings, informational workshops, citizen surveys, outreach and notification costs. Provide accommodations and incentives for underrepresented, underrepresented and lower resource people impacted by the project to participate in surveys, focus groups or events. And could include accommodations like event childcare, translation services or transportation reimbursement. Um, support research data collection, capacity studies, inventories and mapping. Pay consultants, interns, regional planning commissions, staff or legal fees associated with the project. Purchase materials needed to produce a bylaw like maps, copies. And conduct other. And conduct other non-prohibited activities.
They do require you to have an outreach component, public outreach component, and then you can use some of the money. So let if we are applying for twenty five grand. We probably have to set up some sort of a budget.
Right, for po- and could it be possible that that we use another contractor for public outreach, like someone that might have a um um. More expertise in an equity lens and have other ideas. To get the public engaged. I was reading through the CCRPs um. Um equity audit that they did that I think um. Wasn't abundant sun. It was the other one and then the name will um creative discourse. Which is um a consulting firm that specializes in trying to get a broader range of public participation and. They've they've done work with when when you see they did work in Essex. And it might be interesting to try something different. Because we seem to be doing the same thing and we get the same people.
As long as that's not another non-prohibitive. Um I, do you want me to talk anymore about the neighborhood development area designation and what that? What the benefits are and what the eligibility are, because I have another slide.
If you think, especially if you think it could be combined.
Yeah, I.
Yes, please.
So as I said earlier, like these areas are, it's an enhanced designation and they're for areas surrounding the village centers. So I put a little cut and paste of that map, which uh prob- it's it's, I don't think it's any place in particular that I'm aware of. But you probably recognize it from the town plan and the that map that David has created for us with the little like dotted line around the. The village centers um. And so the neighborhood development area designation, the whole point of it is to incentivize new and infill housing. In areas that are within walking distance to the designated village centers.
Love it.
I have another slide where I. This is just a sample of the neighborhood development area benefits. If you if you receive the designation um. There is exemption from Act two fifty for qualified mixed income and mixed use projects. And yes, they do define mixed mixed income and mixed use projects, but I didn't include that here, because there was like a flow chart with like lots of arrows. Is it this? Then no, yes, no. And then Act two fifty projects that don't qualify for the exemption, get a fifty percent discount on the fees associated with an Act two fifty permit. But I thought those were things I wanted to highlight, because I know we have an item in the town plan about, you know, strategizing ways to kind of. Uh make development more accessible for developers that, you know, are historically, you know. Reluctant to go over the things that trigger Act two fifty and the thresholds for that. Um another benefit would is that any conditional use decisions that the VR DRB makes uh for housing projects that. Say they meet the character of the area, they cannot be appealed. Um you get priority consideration for state grants. I believe this is at a level over and above and beyond what a village center designation gets you. You get higher priority is. Um and then it can help meet the location requirements for tax and commit finance districts, which we have, I think, started. Have we had any conversations about that?
We talked about it a little bit with the guy from St. Albans, but I thought the state said you couldn't do any more of them, that there was a moratorium on them.
That's correct currently, but I.
They're gonna re. That would be good.
Yeah, so it could kind of set us up for going there um if and when they come back out of the moratorium.
I would have to say, looking at this list, given what. Um Sarah and Chris have said about the challenges that Act two fifty poses to. Increasing housing in the places that we want to, that this seems like a really good thing to pursue. And is in line with our intent with the attempt then. That's my quick assessment and vote for this one.
The only thing I am not sure about is the conditional use. That if the decision says it does not meet the character of the area, it can't be appealed.
So if it does mean it does meet the character of the area.
If the DRV says yes, it does, then the decision can't be appealed on that basis. Somebody can't say, no, it doesn't, because the. True.
And it still can't be appealed.
No, it doesn't say that. It seems like if they said that, it could be appealed.
Yeah, typically it can be appealed if the DRV says. This does meet the character of the area. Anyone can say like, no, we disagree. We want to feel this decision, which you wouldn't be able to do. For housing uh projects if you have the neighborhood.
If a DRV says it doesn't meet the character.
They say it doesn't meet the character.
Then it would be the the applicant would be the one, then you would assume it would be denied. So then the applicant would appeal it and this doesn't take that away.
Yeah.
Is part of uh creating an NDA. NDA um. Necessitate clear definition of what that character is.
I don't think that's part of NDA. I think that's part of the bylaws already.
Part of zoning. But it's actually, it's in the town plan now that it says, because it's been in there since the last town plan. I think it's still in there that says that. It they that part of the zoning really needs more definition.
And then we've we called it out. Saying like, this has been used historically. For exclusion.
Right, so. So the zoning now does say for each zoning district what the character of that area is, which mostly talks about. The development pattern. But it's not really helping us.
It looks, it needs to be, needs to be looked at.
And and these are just the benefits. So if we went back on the prior slide. It doesn't, we can address all those housing, uh so all those zoning questions within this, right? We would be by going through the designation process, we would. Could, as you were saying, tie it to. An update of the bylaws around zoning that could include an update of what. Character.
So if the DRV did something that was off of um. The Mill Road over here, Old Mill Road, said, sorry, that's really a agricultural district. So you cannot put in a fifteen unit subdivision there. Should be, it's outside of the character. That would not be appealable. And with that is something we would want to have happen. We would want that development to go in there.
Wait, it's way, it's a way more convoluted process, okay? This, what Linda's describing here is for Jericho to apply to the state. To have an area approved as a neighborhood development area. And that would be the precursor to the zoning. To get approved from the state for an NDA, my impression is like a year. It's a it's a long process. It's a huge application. So the grant, would the grant be taking us all the way through the application process? Or would the grant be getting us ready to apply?
The grant would be preparing the materials to apply.
To apply.
Yeah, so it'd be like updating some of the maps, like we could define the area, map it. Into some of the like tasky things that you need to have prepared in order to get this designation. And part of getting the designation does require your zoning bylaws to have certain things in them. Mostly around being pedestrian oriented, having um. Human scale development, small setbacks, things like that, which I think we already have in Riverside. But I haven't done an audit. Well, I think part of it would be an audit on our existing zoning to see. You know, here are the here are the things that the neighborhood development area needs, that we need to have in our zoning to meet the requirements of the neighborhood designation. Neighborhood development area designation. Here are the things we already have and here are the things we need to tweak. So it'd be like a probably a subset of changes that would need to be made, if any. I again, I don't.
And do you generally make those changes in advance of being approved as in? The uh having the designation, the zoning changes?
Well, this would be my first time going through it, but my understanding is that, yes, you need to have the zoning bylaws in place. In order to be granted the designation.
Right, so in terms of scope, this project is significantly larger. With more moving parts. It's like this big application, there's mapping, there's zoning updates. There's there'd be a lot of public outreach. It's like new and different for Jericho. The Riverside zoning is, the zoning is standing in the way of development. We know today that Tetra wants to do X and Wisdom House wants to do Y. And the site has continued to sit idle and we've heard from many people that the zoning is a problem. That's a very like tactical. Project. So you originally said you could kind of see them being grouped together. But now I guess I'm kind of with Chris, like twenty five thousand dollars doesn't seem like enough, but if we were already. Going to spend X on the Riverside, maybe it is a fifty thousand dollar project. And we get as much of it covered by the grant as we can. So what would be the pitch that ties these two together? It's sort of like phase one is updating the Riverside zoning, phase two. It as as like a component or as the linchpin of this new NDA designation?
Whereas we don't want the NDA just for Riverside. I I don't think.
Right, we probably eventually want to get it for the other villages.
But you apply separately, I think, for each one.
Yeah, same with, well, yeah, you do, because the village centers are all separate designations, yes.
We will learn a lot by going through the process and learning. To go through the others. So we could pitch it as this is our first. We're gonna chunk it up, we're gonna learn from this, we're gonna be able to set in place now we understand what it takes to do it. With the T up for the next centers. Right? And then apply whatever lessons are learned.
Is it too complicated to partner with Underhill? I noticed that.
You get more.
You get more, you and me partner with another town.
It would be too complicated to assume we could partner before the end of this month. Yes, but going forward, I mean, I do think it's something that we should be having competition found out.
But thinking of Riverside, do we have a sense of where this NDA boundary would be? Because it we've butt up against.
I mean, more or less, you can look at the dotted line that David drew around Riverside on the future land use maps in the town plan. Does that ring any bells for you? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I know what you're talking about. I'm not picturing his dotted line. Exactly where it is.
Because it's it's a half mile.
I just wondered literally where does that get you? And if you're on Route fifteen, does that? Does it really make sense? It strikes me as more applicable for the other two centers, but.
I have it, um sorry, this is SJ. I have it if you want me to share my screen.
Yeah, if you have the map and you can share it, that would be great. Thank you.
It almost seems like more of the NDA there would be in Underhill. Sort of appropriate.
Well, we wouldn't be applying for it to extend.
No, I know, but I'm just saying in terms of the.
A plant from a planning point of view, yeah. Okay, so there's Route fifteen. Where's the middle school?
To the right, uh where the word Riverside is.
Yeah, it must be right at the E.
I think it's the parcel right next to the E in Riverside. Oh, wait, no, it's that's probably the Underhills, the ID school and then the.
Yeah, but it's, I think it's that.
So doesn't, isn't a lot of that yellow? The yellow.
See Park Road there, which is the diagonal coming off on the right inside.
So the the yellow is the designated village center? And then and then the line around it.
Just the five, just the ten minute walk.
That's the quarter, yeah. Yeah, and so this is Dickinson right here. And Raceway is on the other side. So. The the land within that circle, at least on the Jericho side, is Mills Riverside Park.
Which doesn't make sense.
Valley Edge, Willow Lane, Brookside. All those and all Palmer Lane looks pleasing from there. But you're right, there is a lot of that that will fall into the Underhill side of Park Street.
There is an option for um. If you're constrained, Linda, you can talk to this more than I can, but if you're constrained by um. You know, different geographic features and whatnot to extend the eligibility area. And especially because it ba- it bumps up against Mills River. I don't know if we'd be able to make that argument and extend along Route fifteen and into the commercial district at all.
Yeah, this, I mean, this image is really just. An approximation of the area. We would have to, you know, get into the nitty gritty details and and define it um.
Right, like maybe in our case, we would go up Brown's Trace and or road. Because that's on the same side of Route fifteen as the school and the park.
Yeah, but that's not. Anybody's imagination, a part of the Riverside neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be too far.
In a global sense, but not.
If you're a fast walker.
I'm just wondering, like, realistically, does it really make sense? Like, how much of that of the NDA would we really be able to capitalize on around Riverside?
There's a lot of development potential there on the.
Tetra parcel.
Well, that's already, but that's already. We're talking about extending past that.
Off a raceway.
You get the enhanced benefits that we don't currently have with the village centering back to fifty exemptions.
Well, I was gonna ask you about that. If you're developing in a village center, do you get that Act two fifty exemption?
You do under the Home Act if you have twenty four units of housing or less. If you have more than you do not, and that is a temporary. Measure that will expire in twenty twenty six.
But an NDA doesn't have that limitation. It's like, no matter what, no matter how big it is. That seems almost backwards, but. Okay, we have to make a decision because it's ten to nine and we want to vote to. Decide whether or not we're going to apply and what we're going to apply for, so I'm gonna call the question. Yes, or whatever.
I would suggest that we take sort of Heidi's idea. We know we're gonna move forward uh already with the rewriting of the the uh. Character based zoning. Let's find another way to use that money, get some. Get some grant money to cover that instead. Our money's fungible, that money is not. So I would move that we say, yes, let's do it for character based zoning. And if we get it, double bubble bonus, we get to put the money somewhere else that we've already allocated.
But not but not character based zoning and the NDA, just you you're you're moving just the character based.
Hey, do we have a second?
A second for that motion? I would second that.
Okay, so now we can debate it further. Or anybody could offer an amendment to that motion? Or we could vote on the motion?
Sarah popped on, she must have something to say.
I'm ready to vote on the motion.
And and Eric, your reason for not covering the NDA is because it just it it can you can you?
It's cleaner this way. This is something we know it's defined, we know what we have. It's in process, it's on our books, it's something we want to do. We can present it as a. It's a full package. We'd have to write a new package for the NDA.
Do we? Need money for a consultant or for something else to do the and to get ourselves started on the NDA process? need money for a consultant or for something else to do that and to get ourselves started on the N D A process? Like, if we don't use this opportunity, is there other ways for us to step into that zone?
Well, again, if we get the money, we can take it and allocate. Character based.
Yeah, we probably, we probably could do some initial investigations with David or with somebody else.
With regional planning.
We could use this grant maybe to do a little bit more public outreach than we an- anticipated doing on the, on the Riverside, because with Riverside, we'd be like, we try to spend as little as possible, and if we had the grant, we could maybe be a little bit more thorough. So, yeah, and, and these grants come up all the time. So it's not like this would be our only opportunity on the N D A.
I think it's annual.
Mm-hmm.
Would, would the, and I'm, I'm sorry, something. Would the working on N D A be a kind, a kind of work that would be fund, fundable through the the annual work plan for the C C R P?
I'm not sure, I could ask that question, it might be.
Mm-hmm. Right. Or the other one, the municipal planning grant? With that.
I think it would be that I'm not. My question is just, um, will this be affected by the, did we look at all of the designations? Like, you know, how they're all getting revamped and reevaluated and maybe reclassified? Would, would this neighborhood development thing fall under that cycle of reevaluation? Because it maybe it'll change as a part of that, and then yeah, maybe then it makes sense to kind of pull back a little bit. I had a phone call with Jacob Hemmerich, who's the contact with this program and for all the state designations today, and he, I asked that question, I said, does, should, should we bother doing this N D A if we know that the designations are under scrutiny? There's a report in the study going on right now, yeah, assessing the designations, and he said, well, we don't know what the legislature is gonna do with the results of these reports, so I think it makes sense to pursue as though nothing will change. And if things do change, then any existing designations would just be funneled into potentially any new potential category. So you would not ever lose a designation, it would, it might evolve into a di- having a different name, but there would not be any risk of losing a designation, it would become something else. So his recommendation was like, you could just, he's like, you can just go for it now, which was not consistent with, with what C C R P C had said to me, because they had said, why don't you hold out until the dust settles on the designations? And then I talked to the person who runs the designation program, and he was like, no, because we don't know if or when these will change, so it doesn't make sense to kind of hold, hold any application back if you do plan to pursue it.
We could also think about whether or not Riverside really is the right first one. We were talking about there might be others, so we could take some time to think about it.
I don't want to make more of work for anyone. I think the designation sound, all those bonuses sound like a really good reason to pursue that. I'm hearing what you're saying, Eric, to that like, well, if it's an easy swap out, if we get the money for Riverside and then we're not using town money, we can swap it out, but I don't think we get to make that decision. I think somebody else makes that decision, so um, we're not guaranteed to get that money to do the, the neighborhood designation, even though logically it makes sense. So I'm a little less keen because we have the money in hand for Riverside, move Riverside. If it's not a big one to do the second one, which is the, the neighborhood designation idea, I actually become a bit more in favor of that. Cause I think a long line is going, so I'm, I am saying no to Eric's.
Okay, so you could, when we vote, you can say no.
So it'd be my rationale for, for saying no.
Okay, so you're speaking against the motion.
Speaking, I am.
Love this.
Parliamentary.
Okay. Does anybody else want to speak either in support or with questions about the motion?
Uh, I just, I, I think the N D A is ultimately a very important tool for Jericho. But I'm not convinced, I don't personally feel ready to say Riverside should be the first place to do that, because I'm not sure really makes sense. I would think it would make a lot of sense if we combined with Underhill to do that, because that makes a lot of sense, which isn't gonna happen this round, so.
But if we can do the work that gets us set up for doing an N D A without saying we're gonna use Riverside as a pilot.
But I think for this application, they want a specific.
Oh, got it. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not generic.
Sorry, I apologize.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
I'm ready.
Okay, so the motion is to apply for the bylaw modernization grant and request that we use the grant to update the Riverside character based zone. Can I make an amendment, can I make an amendment? Could we make it Riverside Village Center zoning and the character based zone? Because the Village Center is larger than the form based code. So here's Riverside, so here's what the N D A would be, here's Riverside, here's the form based code. So if we're like, if we want to be a little bit expansive, but stay with a boundary we already have, and the Village Center is kind of like the immediately outlying area. So I would make an amendment to say that we should apply for Riverside. The Village Center including the character based zone.
I will amend my motion to reflect what you just said. I think that's a fantastic idea to take a small Riverside and extend it to the entire zone where meets up with what Chris is saying as well, it gives us more opportunities and it gives us a better way to spend, so it's not just the character based zoning that we have for the Riverside property, but rather it's that entire area.
Right, but just to be, we don't know that we would apply the form based code, we would, we would, there's zoning.
Yeah.
And we are, and here's the form based code, which is a portion.
Within the zone.
But within, this is zoning for some of the land, that's a little bit different, and this is the zoning for the rest of the land. So what I'm suggesting is that we apply to update the zoning for the Riverside Village Center, including an update to the form based code component.
And we mix those two together? Cause the way you described it, it was you could update character based zoning, which is limited just to that one property.
I only described it that way because it was.
Easier.
It was matching up with action items in the town plan, which we just talked about the character based on.
Right.
Not eligibility, it is eligible that we could update.
Yeah.
The Village Center zoning.
But we do have in the town plan that we want to update regulations to reduce obstacles to housing. So that would be kind of like the organizing principle.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that's my, that's my friendly amendment. Should I wink and make it really friendly?
No, don't do that.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
What is, what is the new amendment, what is the new resolution saying that we will?
We're gonna apply for a grant to update the bylaws for the Riverside Village Center including the form based code, the character based zone component. Yes.
Yes.
In order to facilitate pedestrian friendly and housing forward development.
Do we need another second now?
I don't know if we do, but sure. Okay, so Heidi. Okay, so Eric, that's your motion, you're cool with that? Heidi seconded, okay, we're ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote? Sarah, thank you. Okay, good to go, all right. Oh my gosh.
That was, that was a good process.
You guys are great, okay. Um, Linda, planner's report.
Excellent. Thanks for bringing that up.
Let's see, uh, I will be brief, um. I did attend a webinar today hosted by Vermont League of Cities and Towns that was summarizing the work that's being done through the Home Act regarding studies that were funded through the Home Act, so the Home Act is the um, Housing Bill, what, what it's now called. Um, and so there were four different um reports that were um, are, are in progress. One is a report for uh, that the regional planning commissions are working on to um create more consistent future land use mapping, which is probably not important to you guys, but um my understanding is that the way all the different regional planning commissions does their regional plan and the future land use map within that regional plan, they're all using different terminology and language for how they, that, what they call different areas of their region, and so there's an effort underway to create consistent language so that of future land use map in one regional plan could, is similar to one in another region, that makes sense? That's one of the studies that's going on, they're working on um, on that, uh, as I mentioned earlier, there's the um assessment of the state designation programs and how well they're working, so currently there's five different state designations. Um, and it seems like the recommendation might be uh, for that to be consolidated down into two different programs. One designation program that is targeted towards areas that are planned for growth, and one being targeted towards um, historic, more historic areas that are more preservation based rather than growth oriented. Um, so that's kind of the conversation that's been going on around the state designations, um, and also part of that conversation is allowing for larger geographies for some of the designations. Cause as we talk about here, they're pretty tight as far as the boundary. I learned an interesting um data point, so currently zero point three percent of the land in Vermont is in designate, state designated areas.
Wow.
So it's tiny, and so um the informal goal that was discussed, is being discussed, is having that be around ten to twenty percent of the land. Um, they talked about some of the updates to Act two fifty, cause that's another study that's commissioned through the report or through the Home Act, um. So they're talking about potentially shifting from using map based jurisdiction rather than like the, the typical way it's triggered is by like number of housing units or um, there's another trigger that's like if you build more than ten units within five years, within five miles, like those sort of triggers going away and using something that's more map based as far as like jurisdiction. Um, and there's conversations around having within those locational jurisdictions, different tiers um, where there would be less restrictive and more restrictive um, requirements within the Act two fifty, so in areas that are ready and willing to grow, those areas are being talked about as potentially being exempt. In the rural residential areas, the conversation is around having similar triggers to what's existing in Act two fifty and then having identified potential natural resource areas where there are more triggers or more restrictive um, triggers. And then the last study is about uh, potential for municipalities to be delegated administration of Act two fifty permits, and so.
Would you say no thank you? I know, I don't.
Conversation around that was, it was acknowledged that most likely only the largest and most
Yeah.
good resource, well resourced towns would be even willing to, to go there. Um, but that if, if that was to become an option, that there would need to be some kind of like agreement with the Natural Resources Board about what that looks like and how it all works. Um, so they didn't talk too much about that, cause it sounds like you know, it's relatively complex, we're really only gonna apply to a small number of municipalities. So that was all I wanted to kind of.
Interesting. It is like planning and zoning is like a big hot topic for the legislature this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
This go around.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see what gets traction this year.
Um, does anybody have any other updates they would like to share? Okay, um, so our next meeting on November seventh. Don't really have work, we don't really have an agenda for.
I will not be here. I'm out of town.
Okay.
Um, some of the.
It will be whaling.
I had written on here our well, I just wrote these down tonight. Talking about select board hearing strategy with David. Uh, and reviewing the summary document that tiers are creating.
Okay. Okay, and then I'm inclined to cancel our meeting on November twenty first.
My second.
I think like, everybody really has been working really hard, I'm so appreciative that we have like a- almost a hundred percent attendance at our meetings, and I think that's really pretty rare for community meetings in general and for planning commissions, it doesn't seem to be the case, and that's the week of Thanksgiving, so we're gonna cancel that meeting, okay?
Oh, I think you should hold it.
No.
I'm gonna be out of town.
Okay, we don't need an executive session, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm obviously adjourned.
Sabina, second?
Second.
Wendy, all is in favor of adjourned?
Hi.
To everyone, okay, thank you, everyone. Good night, thanks Sarah for joining. Thanks, S J.